Welcome to regular session, Mayor and City Council meeting, 6:00 PM, Wednesday, September 11, 2024, City Hall Complex, Council Chambers. Call this meeting to order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Vice Mayor, do this, the honor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to take a moment of silence in honor of the victims of nine eleven attacks. Called the public of Mr. David Oropesa, representing Esteban Cervantes. Three minutes, sir. Thank you. Come on.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. Thank you. My name is David Oropesa, residing in Nogales, Arizona. I'm here to present Mr. Esteban Cervantes, who is an undergraduate at Stanford University, and he had done a little project, and he's going to present it to you, what he has done and what his accomplishments are. Esteban, it's all yours.
Thank you, guys, for having me. Like you said, I'm Esteban Cervantes. I'm a sophomore studying bioengineering. Sorry. I'm Esteban Cervantes, studying bioengineering at Stanford University. And this summer, I was granted the opportunity to work with an organization called Biobiology for Everyone, and I was given a small grant to create a community project here. So I love gardening. It's a passion of mine, so I thought maybe bringing a little bit of that into one of the city parks would be really wonderful. And I decided to build in Las Cancas, Verdes, the Green Park. That's what we call it. So with the help of Mr. Oropesa and my parents and the small grant that I was given, I was able to create three garden beds and donate three citrus trees. And it's just been wonderful the last couple of weeks. And yeah, if you guys would pass by anytime, it's there for the community. Thank you, guys.
You said you put some citrus? Put some citrus trees? You put some citrus trees?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you. What kind of citrus?
I put a lemon tree and an orange tree and then eagles.
Thank you. Thank you for considering the city. Thank you. And thank your parents. Okay, next we have presentations, Proclamation of National Suicide Prevention Month.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to ask Specialty Therapist Tiffany, I hope I'm pronouncing it the right way, Mahillish? Melish? Tree? Huh? Okay, well, then, who's going to read?
Welcome to China.
Good evening. I'm Specialty Therapist Lysana Perezavro. Whereas suicide is the eleventh leading cause of all deaths in the United States and the third leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of fifteen to twenty-four, veterans are 1.5 times more likely to die by suicide than non-veteran adults. On average, 17.5 veteran suicides per day in 2021. Whereas in the United States, one person completes suicide every 15.2 minutes. Whereas it is estimated that 4.6 million people in the United States are survivors of suicide, those who have lost a loved one to suicide. Whereas 50.2% of people who die by suicide use a firearm, and guns stored in the house are used for suicide 40 times more often than for self-protection. Whereas an increase in the overall suicide rate in our country was seen since 2007, representing a change in the recent pattern of stability or slight declines. The suicide rate for those 15 to 24 years old has more than doubled since the mid-1950s, and the suicide rate remains highest for adults 75 years of age or older. Whereas the stigma associated with mental illness and suicidality works against suicide prevention by discouraging persons at risk for suicide from seeking life-saving help and further traumatizes survivors of suicide. Whereas Prevention Coalition and the American Association of Suicidology, which are dedicated to reducing the frequency of suicide attempts and deaths and the pain of survivors affected by suicides of loved ones, through educational programs, research projects, intervention services, and bereavement services urge that we recognize suicide as a national and state public health problem and declare suicide prevention to be a statewide priority. Promote awareness that suicide is a public health problem that is preventable and develop broad-based support for suicide prevention. Whereas this call encourages individuals, communities, organizations, and governments to engage in open, honest discussions about mental health and suicide. By starting conversations, we can break down barriers and raise awareness, check in with a friend or loved one, share personal stories, and advocate for mental health resources and support services. Let's change the narrative and start the conversation. Whereas every conversation, no matter how small, contributes to a more supportive and understanding society. By addressing these areas and working collaboratively across sectors, we can create a more supportive and compassionate society where suicide is preventable and everyone feels valued and understood. Do I read that bottom part? Now, therefore.
I am the mayor.
Porque Maldonado, Mayor of the City of Nogales, Arizona, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as National Suicide Prevention Month.
Now we have item B, Proclamation National Gear Up Week. Would you want to read it? Or? Well, it's up to you. Mr. Doe.
From the City of Nogales.
From the City of Nogales and the Office of the Honorable Mayor Jorge Maldonado. This proclamation, whereas the gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs gear up is a federally funded competitive grant program designed to increase the number of low-income students who are prepared to enter and succeed in post-secondary education. Whereas gear up serves low-income minority and disadvantaged students and their families from underserved communities who might be the first person in their family to go to college. And whereas gear up provides six- or seven-year grants to state or partnerships to deliver support and resources to students and their families, starting no later than the seventh grade, middle school through high school, and onward to fulfill their dreams of obtaining a post-secondary education. And whereas gear up includes interventions such as tutoring, mentoring, rigorous academic preparation, financial education, and college scholarships to improve access to higher education for low-income, minority, and disadvantaged first-generation students and their families. And whereas gear up is built around public-private partnerships enlisting the formidable resources of government, business, and community groups to support low-income students as they prepare to enter and succeed in college. And whereas the C-Creo Gear Up Program is a partnership of the school districts in Santa Cruz County, Arizona. And whereas the C-Creo Gear Up serves approximately 800 students in post-secondary education and workforce and will continue to serve this cohort of students until 2025. Whereas the week of September 23, 2024, has been declared National Gear Up Week. And whereas the City of Nogales is committed to providing a quality education for all students, helping them to achieve their highest potential. Now, therefore, I, Jorge Maldonado, Mayor of the City of Nogales, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the week of September 23 as National Gear Up Week in the City of Nogales, and I urge all citizens to join me in this special observance.
Thank you, Mariposa, and thank you. Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Before I go to financial, I do want to make one statement. This is on me. As everybody has noticed, we have two news reports that our city manager is departing, resigned, and we have our deputy city manager that is retiring. I just want to give everybody, we have an executive session tonight, and I want to give the city and the community the surebouts that we're going to continue. We're going to look for our best options. And I want to thank both of these gentlemen for their hard work and livelihood that they have given to the city. And, you know, we're going to miss their experience, their knowledge. So I just want to let the committee that, you know, hard times come, but we got to continue forward. Talk to directors on proceeding and continuing in an open matter. And, you know, our executive session tonight will be a key one as how we will proceed. So thank you, everybody, and thank both John and Roy for your commitment to the city. Next, we go to financial report. We have the financial report. Ms. Jean is not here. She's at a conference.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Jean is out of town on a pre-scheduled training that she had a couple of months ago scheduled since then. We weren't counting that the meeting was going to be moved. Do you have a copy of the financial report in front of you? If you have any questions, feel free to send me an email, and I'll answer the questions that you might have. Thank you.
We'll move to discussion items. Discussion number, item number eight, Discussion Direction of Possible Action Approval of In-Kind Support of the Nogales Bicycle Classic Event with Police Estimated Not to Exceed Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Item B, Discussion Direction and Possible Action Approval of In-Kind Support of the Dia de los Muertos event with police and Parks and Rec staff estimated not to exceed $3,043.70. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All against? Motion passes. Item C, Discussion Direction and Possible Action Approval of In-Kind Support of the Mexican Baseball Event with Police and Parks and Rec staff estimated not to exceed $2,930.88. Second. Second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Go down to number eight, Liquor License. A, Consideration and Possible Action of Liquor License 2024-10, Approval and Recommendation of the Insurance Issuance of a Special Event Liquor License Application for Ms. Sandra L. Lopez of Mexicoya Academy of Excellence for a fundraiser October 25, 2024. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Item B, Consideration and Possible Action of Liquor License 2024-11, Approval and Recommendation of Insurance of a Special Event Liquor License Application for Jorge Ricardo Frias Saucel for Sacred Heart of Jesús Roman Catholic Parish for a fundraiser September 27, 28, and 29, 2024. Unfair? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. D, Consideration and Possible Action of Liquor License 2024-12, Approval and Recommendation of Insurance of a Special Event Liquor License Application for Ms. Sandra Corys for Cultura Arte Committee for a fundraiser October 12, 2024. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. E, Consideration and Possible Action of Liquor License 2024-13, Approval of Recommendation of Insurance of a Special Event Liquor License Application for Sandra, Ms. Sandra Corys for Cultura Arte Committee for a fundraiser October 26, 2024. Second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. E, Consideration and Possible Action of Liquor License 2024-14, Approval of Recommendation of Insurance of Liquor License, Ms. Andrea Delma Lukowicz for Express Fuel 282 North Grand Avenue, Nogales, Arizona, 5621, Number 010 Beer and Wine. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. F, Consideration and Possible Action of Liquor License 2024-15, Approval of Recommendation of Insurance of Liquor License for Mr. Javier Alonso Delgado Jaramillo for Okie Dokie Sushi 349 West Mariposa Road, Nogales, Arizona, 5621, Number 006 Bar. Second. Okay, discussion? Go ahead.
I know that we've had some issues, or they've had some issues there at that restaurant bar in the past. I would just like to know staff recommendation on this.
Purchasing.
The Okie Dokie?
Okie Dokie, item F.
I understand it was purchased by.
What is staff recommendation on this?
I know they had some issues with the liquor board before, councilman. I am not up to date as far as to if that's still a pending issue or not, but I'm pretty sure that Acting Assistant Chief Gallego can probably enlighten us on that as far as to where we're at. Robert, can you come up, please?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I believe there was issue, I mean, we have had several issues as far as the latest status. I don't have it on hand right now, but I can get it to you. I know the liquor board was looking at revoking their license at one point, whether they did or not. I mean, I can get that for you in a couple hours or a couple minutes, maybe I can get it right now, so if you give me a little time.
Mr. Mayor, so this is, this goes to the liquor board. So if they find, obviously, that this is not under compliance and they are in violation, they will not issue this liquor license.
I can make a couple calls right now and give you that information as soon as possible.
And it is a new name. It's not the same owner, right? Delgado?
It's Javier Alonso Delgado.
Yeah, but I'm almost certain that the relocation goes to the establishment though as well.
Mayor?
Yeah.
We're only approving that they go forward with the application process, then I think we're good because, like the city manager stated, if it's up to the liquor board.
Yeah, it's good.
Just to be clear, the liquor board will take the council's recommendation and generally follow it unless somebody shows, unless somebody opposes it here at a public hearing. So the liquor board tends to defer to the local government on recommendations. So I'm just looking at the issuance of license. So if this is a, I'm trying to think if this is a person-to-person transfer. Do we know if this is called a person-to-person transfer? Because that would imply it's a new owner, a new license holder. But I can't quite tell from the, is this a, do we know if this is a new owner or a new operator of the restaurant?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not aware if this is a new owner or not. As far as to answering any technical liquor board questions or liquor violation questions, I'm not the search and matter expert on that. That's why we have a liquor board.
You do have the option of doing nothing, not making any recommendation. Generally speaking, like I said, unless somebody opposes the issuance of the license, the liquor board will make the final decision, usually in favor of the applicant unless it discovers on its own that there are problems with an applicant that don't qualify for a liquor I guess I'm looking at the application. It's difficult to tell. I don't know if the applicants here, it's difficult to tell if this is a new owner requesting that this restaurant license be transferred to this new owner, new buyer of the business, which, which oftentimes is a good thing when you have a problem license holder and then they sell the business to a new owner. They tend, you know, you know, you hope that they would kind of clean it up. But I can't tell from it. This is actually a bar license. So I suspect it, just by the application, that it's, that this particular applicant is acquiring the bar slash the license from a current operator. And that's what, because otherwise it would, it would indicate, it would indicate something different. So that's, that was, that's my, what I suspect.
Go ahead, Mr. Doe.
So just to be clear then, it, in other words, if we proceed or give the okay or the liquor license, if there is any kind of violation or something that the liquor board is looking at, it's up to them whether they're going to override our decision. So either way, I mean, in other words, if we vote against it, it kind of puts a little damper on it. Because what I'm seeing is we have a new operator applying. So whatever violations there were in the past isn't, it really doesn't fall on this present.
Right. You don't generally impute the bad behavior of the prior owner to the, to the new owner. The other thing is if you do vote to oppose it, then in order to make that effective, I would have to be at the liquor board during, they'd set up a hearing, and then we would want to attend, you know, the city would want to attend the hearing and argue why we oppose it. And so we probably need somebody who could testify factually about why this, this applicant shouldn't be issued the license. And right now, I'm not hearing any, anything, any basis to deny it.
Thank you for that clarification.
Well, good. Continue.
Is there any time limits on this application? Is it something we have to act on now?
No. Ten days.
There is a time limit. If council doesn't act this month, I think the time is going to run because usually it's 20 days, but by the time everything's properly posted and agendized. So. So no action, sorry. No action would be a no action. The board, the liquor board would make a decision on its own if you have concerns. I don't know if you can pause it maybe 10, 15 minutes, I can make some calls to the liquor board and give you more information, maybe if that'll help.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
The liquor board does their due diligence. They don't just rubber stamp anything. So they do their background and as far as to any reports, owners, and as far as to the, the new owner and the transfer and everything else. So they do their due diligence. That's one of the things I can tell you, they're very serious about what they.
Yeah. And one thing, you know, just throw it out there, it's, you know, it's not a function, it's a actual, it's a restaurant. It's a, you know, we all know where, what restaurant it is, Okie Dokie Sushi, you know, it, you know, it's, it's not an event that's spontaneous, giving it out to, you know, just nobody. And, you know, so I may feel comfortable with, because it's an established business, you know. So you good with that, Mr. Elias?
Good with that. Based on legal advice given to us and the information we have at hand, I wouldn't want to put a stop to a business just because we don't have all the information.
As you put my time.
And we do have checks and balances and time is of the essence. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalo. Thank you. With that said, all in favor? Aye. Mr. Doe. Thank you. Motion pass. Item G, Consideration and Possible Action of Liquor License 2024-16, Approval and Recommendation of Insurance of a Special Event Liquor License Application for Mr. Herman A. Salaya for Boys and Girls Club of Santa Cruz County, Inc., for the fundraiser October 2nd and 3rd, 2024. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. We move to number nine, Orders. A Consideration and Possible Action of Order 2024-09-035, An Order of the Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, Authorizing the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Nogales School District Number One for the Reimbursement of Salaries and Employees Related Expenses of Two Police School Resources Officers at the Nogales High School and the Wade Carpenter Middle School for the 2024-2025 School Year, Nogales Police Department. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. B, Consideration and Possible Action of Order 2024-09-036, An Order of the Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, Authorizing the Purchase of Pepperball Lunchers and Equipment Through Arizona House Bill 2897, Funding for $112,800, NPD. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion passes. C, Consideration and Possible Action of Order 2024-09-037, An Order of the Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, Allowing the Nogales Police Department to Accept an Award from the Department of Health and Human Services. from the Department of Health and Human Services, SAMCHA, in the amount of $1,418,676 over the next four years to support efforts in mitigate the overdose in the community. Second? Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. D, consideration impossible action of order 2024-09-38, an order of the City Council of City of Nogales, Arizona, authorizing a grant agreement with the Tojónam, Odoma Nation and the City of Nogales on behalf of the Nogales Police Department for funding in the amount of $100,000 through the Tojónam Odoma 12% Grant Fund. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. E, consideration impossible action of order 2024-09-39, an order of the Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, appointing a member to the Appeals Commission. Second?
Yeah, I think you have to name the person you're moving.
You have to name the person that you're actually moving to appoint.
That is, uh, no, Gracie, no, Gracie Mariscal. Yeah. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for the Gracie Mariscal. F, consideration impossible action of order 2024-09-040, an order of the Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, authorizing the city manager to sign a petition of annexation request by Rio Rico Fire District for five separate land parcels located on South River Road in Guababi Ranch area. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Number 10, ordinance. A, consideration impossible action of ordinance O 2024-09-002, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Nogales, Arizona prohibiting compression, release, engine braking within city limits in the efforts to protect the health, welfare and safety of the public.
Actually, this is just the first reading for any discussion or presentation of the council, but no vote tonight.
Okay. There is no vote on this one. Ordinance are twice, right?
Yeah, the charter requires two readings of an ordinance, so this would be your first reading.
Okay. Um, next month will be, the next, next month to June.
And then if it's approved, it would take effect 30 days thereafter. So if there's any questions, discussions the council has about this, then would be the time.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Now, item number 11, executive session. One, ARS 3843, personal matters and legal advice, discussion and direction regarding city manager recruitment. Move to, moved into executive session. So move second. All in favor? Aye. Moving to executive session. Thank you.
Council, Mayor Council, we can be from executive session. Council, we go to mayor's and council report, but council would like to ask to move, make a motion to move the executive session confidentiality as to what's the next step on our recruiting. Do I have a second on it? All in favor? All right, thank you. Okay. As direction to city manager, Mr. Bermudez, our recruiting will start tomorrow for a six-month position to point to the opening it up to the 4th of October with the same type of requirements as a regular city manager. It'll be posted on our website. And did I miss anything else that I need? [Crosstalk 1:11]
Just that it's the recruiting for the acting or interim manager position at this point in time. [Crosstalk 1:12]
Okay. Yes, sir. [Crosstalk 1:13]
I was gonna also ask for that because I kind of caught, it seemed like it went to the regular, but the six months is for the acting. I just want to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So besides that, any other mayor councils report? Mr. Bermudez, do you have anything? [Crosstalk 1:14]
Nothing, Mayor. [Crosstalk 1:15]
Mr. Doyle? [Crosstalk 1:16]
No, Mayor. [Crosstalk 1:17]
Ms. Melendez? [Crosstalk 1:18]
We're having the Fiesta Patria event Saturday, this coming Saturday, at the Nogales High School Auditorium from 5 to 7. We are going to have a lot of music vendors and everything. So you are all cordially invited. I hope you can make it. That's all. [Crosstalk 1:25]
Ms. Montiel? [Crosstalk 1:26]
Yes, I just have a quick shout out to Nefti's Priscilla. She had a wonderful event, Mayor, this Friday, this past Friday here at downtown and involved a lot of musical artists, small business owners selling their goods. There were so many people there, I want to thank. Also, even though, is David out there? David Oropes, I know it was in a city event, but he was really good about kind of meeting some of her needs she had there. Didn't cost the city any money, but it's just nice to know that he was collaborating really well with Nefti's there. But the people in Nogales really showed up. There were tons of people and the music was wonderful. And I want to thank personally Nefti. I know she's on, hearing the meeting right now because she applied for a grant and she got it. And those are the types of things that, you know, get the community going and involved. So thank you to Nefti's. [Crosstalk 1:28]
Vice Mayor. [Crosstalk 1:29]
I want to thank Mr. Bermudez, Mr. Kissinger, and all those employees involved helping out at the cities and towns, League of Cities and Towns. We had a very nice event there. And like always, you know, at the showcase, I think Nogales is one of the favorite stops for everybody. So thank you again. [Crosstalk 1:30]
Thank you. Basically, you know, I was up in Hermosillo doing an event with agricultural growers and working on, with the governor on the crossings and all that. I was, you know, I went up to the vice president's rally up in Phoenix. I was in Mexico City looking at, you know, the future administration, working on the water rights and working on the situation on the border crossing, letting him know that we're working on De Cansini, talking about what the future's going to be on both sides of the border. So we collaborate together. You know, we had visitors from GSA looking at that. We actually also, you know, it's not just how they're doing it, it's what the city needs also. And we took a trip to Yuma to look at, you know, they're doing their reconstruction right now. And so we got tips of the do's and don'ts, you know, what works for the city in both ways, what works going south and going north. Then, you know, Circle of Peace is also going to have an event on October 26. We're going to have an event here October 2nd and October 3rd. We're going to have baseball, Mexican baseball fiesta here, you know, at Memorial Park. I think it's Mexicali and Jalisco playing on the 2nd, and you got Wasabe playing Awohua on the 3rd. So bring it out. Kids that 12 years and younger that participated in Little League will wear the jersey and get in free to the games. But hopefully we could get a crowd there. So the Boys and Girls Club is going to be involved. Tickets will be sold by the Nogales High School cheerleaders and the Nogales High School baseball club. They will be, and also will have some tickets at the Parks and Rec facility, at the rec. But it's $10 a ticket. Basically, for the clubs, they will get $2 back off every ticket they sell. So it's giving back. And plus, the cheerleading squad will do concessions also. So besides that, it was a great event. Thank you for everybody that went to Phoenix, to the City and Towns, Arizona City and Towns. I want to thank the Ceruley family from Ceruley Brothers for great donation of their mangoes. And I want to thank Calori Produce for the great donations of their tomatoes. You know, everybody goes for them and they're a big hit at our, at our event. Besides that, I do want to give Mr. Bermudez some time to say some words. [Crosstalk 1:29]
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is my last council meeting. And it was a pleasure to be the city manager for Nogales, the city of Nogales. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for the opportunity. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the trust and support for your leadership. I know you're doing some great things and you'll keep on doing those great things. I just ask that moving forward, the body politic embraces a city manager form of government. That's the only right thing to do. That's the only healthy thing to do for our community that we serve. And once you start doing that, you'll be okay. You know, there's admitted people here, but I'm pretty sure there's a lot of people watching. So the employees, you guys are the backbone of the city. It was a pleasure to work with you and keep on doing what you're doing. Directors, you guys are the movers and shakers. These are the choreographers, everything that happens in a city. Keep on doing what you're doing. And I appreciate your support, your mentoring on your, as your subject matter experts. I only have a couple here. Juan, Hector, Marita, thank you for bringing that housing back to where it should be. David, thank you for taking over that interim. Robert, thank you for what you do and let text know. And I have four directors that are in training. So but, and thank you. Thank you for that, that support and partnership. John, thank you for sharing your administrative, institutional, and historical knowledge. I thought we made a great team. Thank you. Mrs. Robinson? [Crosstalk 1:31] My family and friends, thank you for your support. Most importantly, to the community, thank you. Thank you, thank you. I can't give you enough thanks for, it was an honor to serve you, to serve my community for the last 40 years. Mr. Mayor, it was an honor. Thank you for your leadership. There's no doubt that we'll continue to work together for the come and go of the, of the community that we work. We're still going to do some great things. And thank you for what you do. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Bermudez. And, you know, we'll be here and good luck on your new menus. And I know where you're going. So yes, we'll be working together. Appreciate it. And not just you, but your whole family. Remember, there's only one promise, and you guys say it on record, you're not going to leave me in Little League. You're going to stick to Little League. All right? [Crosstalk 1:32] Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Melendez. [Crosstalk 1:33]
From the bottom of my heart, really thank you for all you did. It was hard. And remember, since the beginning, I told you, it was not a good idea to take that position. I told you. I'm sorry. I told you. And well, you tried. Thank you for all you did. And you did really, really good job. Thank you. Best of luck in your new job. And we're going to be calling you. That's for sure. Thank you. [Crosstalk 1:34]
Thank you. Anybody else? Any future agenda items, General? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I want an update on the Frank Reed Road project and see, you know, where we're at.
Okay. Frank Reed Road update. Mr. Bermudez? [Crosstalk 1:38]
I want an update on the Hojocum Wash as far as what issues we need to fix immediately. I know there's some serious scouring and we had a big sinkhole a month ago. So if we can have an update on that and see what the real, the real issues are on Hojocum because I know they got worse this monsoon season. [Crosstalk 1:40]
Okay. Anybody else? All right. So with that said, you know, like I said it earlier, let's all keep on working together and united and get, you know, get the city on better track and, and just support everybody. I really, really am counting on all the directors to keep the ship afloat and us to grab another city manager to help us in the direction. So thank you. With that said, I move to adjourn this meeting. All in favor? All right? Meeting adjourned. Thank you. Good night.